Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council, January 6, 2015, meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here and also at this time I'd like to ask that you silence all electronic devices. If you would pray with me, please. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Next item on the agenda is the Proclamation National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. It's in January 9, 2015. This time we'd recognize Assistant Chief Chris Verdak. Proclaiming January 9, 2015, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the city of Burlington, whereas the city of Burlington's mayor and city council salute the men and women who do the difficult, dangerous, and often thankless work of safeguarding our communities. The city of Burlington's law enforcement officers are the guardians of our way of life by protecting our freedom and liberty each and every day and emboating the foundation of citizenship. They live the reality that along with our rights come responsibilities both to each of us and to others, and whereas the members, the police department, the city of Burlington, play an essential role safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of this city. And without them, chaos would reign throughout our communities, and whereas it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement officers. The members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas we recognize that 780,000 law enforcement officers put on a badge each day across this country. We have an obligation to ensure that as law enforcement officers face untold risks in the line of duty, we are doing whatever we can to protect them. This means making efforts to become well-informed about our local police department, ensuring they have the best protective equipment and training, and publicly support them in good times and bad. And whereas law enforcement officers never let down their guard, and we must never let down our gratitude and support. We extend our sincere thanks not only in times of tragedy, but for every tragedy averted, every accident avoided because a law enforcement officer took a drunk driver off the road. Every child made safer because a criminal was brought to justice. Every life saved because a law enforcement officer raced to the scene. Now therefore, I, Mayor Ronny Kewall, call upon all citizens of the city of Burlington and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe January 9, 2015 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to show your support to the faithful and loyal law enforcement officers who have shown devotion to their responsibilities and rendered dedicated service to their communities. We further call all citizens of Alamance County to send cards of support, write letters in support of law enforcement, and proudly display a blue light at your home or business to show support this month in honor of law enforcement, this the sixth day of January 2015.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to thank you for your support, ongoing support, long-lasting support, as well as thank the community for the support that we receive from this community. I can't tell you how great that support is that we get each and every day from our community. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, December 16, 2004, city council meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. This time we'd recognize Ms. Kathy Hikes. If you'd come forward, Ms. Renee Ward.
I, Kathy Hikes.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful in their true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are and may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the set state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of city council member in the city of Burlington according to the best of my skill and ability, according to the law, so have we done, so has our will.
So will.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for the delay. But as you get a little older, sometimes you forget things, and that's where I am tonight, so I apologize in advance. We also have some visitors that are part of the ELON interns with the police department. Kayla Harvey, if you'd stand, please, and also Deanna Stanton, if you would stand. Today is their first day. Congratulations. We look forward to some positive things happening. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics, disclosing conflicts of interest. This time we'd recognize Ms. Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None, thank you. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Got a motion, a second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Concerned agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to set a date of public hearing, January 20, 2015, for citizens to comment on area housing and neighborhood improvement needs and proposed activities for the fiscal year 1516 Community Development Program. B, Budget Amendment 2015-43-CDBG, reallocation of fund, is spelled out in your agenda. C, Budget Amendment 2015-44 Police Rico Appropriations, spelled out in your agenda. D, Budget Amendment 2015-45 Police Substance Abuse, and spelled out in your agenda.
May I move, we approve the concerned agenda?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Next item is public hearing, two. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a final resolution confirming a water assessment role for water line improvements along Fairview Drive from Westview Terrace to Garden Road. At this time, I'd recognize Lanny Rue. Welcome, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the December 16, 2014, city council meeting, council set a date of public hearing to confirm this final assessment role for Fairview Drive water line from Westview Terrace to Garden Road. The city received a valid petition for the installation of the water line. Eight property owners are benefited by this installation. Total cost of the line was $53,425. Assessment fees recovered would eventually total $8,000. Three property owners have prepaid these assessments. Tonight's public hearing is to hear any objections or changes to the assessment role as proposed. Otherwise, the city council may confirm the assessment role as written.
Questions for Mr. Rue. Remind you, this is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
May I move to close the public hearing?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
Will we approve the final resolution regarding the...
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Excuse me. Item three, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from O and I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of two monopole billboards. The properties located south of Long Pine Road is shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-2D and being a portion of lots 2 and 8. This time we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council. This rezoning request for billboards has the recommendation of staff and the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended it to council for approval with the use and development conditions that were submitted. The commission also recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property. It is in keeping with the land uses already in the area and it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. As you will recall, this request came before you previously at the November 18 city council meeting, but no action was taken. Therefore, Mr. Longus is here to bring the request back to council for consideration.
Happy 2015, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ms. Hikes, congratulations. Seems a while back that I was serving a few on the school board and you were chairman. The applicant has made a request that the two sites that you see outlined in red be rezoned from the blue sites, the two larger parcels of land that are currently zoned O and I. The two square parcels of 50 by 100 are to be rezoned conditional business in order that the two respective monopole billboards may be erected on each site. The site that's to the right, that's about 3.99 acres, if you remember or have seen Long Pine Road, has a very sharp turn, a 90-degree turn at the end of that property. At the current time, there are several billboards right there at that 90-degree turn. There's another billboard a little farther up on this 3.99 acre parcel. Those existing billboards are wooden piling billboards have been there a number of years. As you can see from the picture, it's probably not the most aesthetic-pleasing thing for us to have on the Interstate ID 540. And my client is cognizant of that and desires to remove those billboards and have new billboards in place. Now, under the state statute, our client could do that, but what we propose to do, what we have made application for, is to have two conforming billboards to be erected on these two conditional business sites. And to remind the council, those would be conforming billboards in that they will be built in accordance with the city code applicable to signage. Also, those billboards would be applicable and compliant with the NC DOT requirements of having at least 500 feet of spacing between each billboard. So with the replacement of the three non-compliant billboards, we will have two complying billboards that will meet the state requirements and the city of Burlington requirements. Each billboard will be approximately 48 feet wide by 14 feet in depth. They will have two faces. Each one, of course, would be facing primarily traffic going down ID 540 in an eastern way, but obviously traffic on the other side going west on ID 540 could see the reverse side of these billboards. It's proposed that these billboards will be lighted with LED lighting, and if you're not familiar with LED lighting, that's that new energy-type savings lighting that is directly focused on the billboard. So it has two benefits. It's energy-saving, number one. Number two, the lighting that's focused on the billboard is far better, brighter, but it doesn't cause ambulance lighting like you'd have in traditional lighting on billboards where the neighbors and everybody gets to see the halo effect of lighting. This doesn't have the halo effect. It's direct. It is governed by the number of lights that you put in, so it's more harmonious with the neighborhood and the properties around it, and it doesn't create a nuisance as to this ambulance lighting overflow of halo effect that you may see from time to time on other billboards. We believe, as the Planning and Zoning Commission has set forth, that the proposed new two billboards will not adversely affect any of the adjoining property. Our client owns both of those two large tracts, so the blue parcels, the one that's almost 11 acres that have one billboard on it, and then the other with 3.99 acres that has a second billboard on it. Those are still remaining as large tracts with the current zoning, O and I. The area in that neighborhood, if you remember, is commercial coming down Long Pine Road, and then when you make the 90-degree turn, the property goes, the road goes back into residential property, but there's no residential property immediately here, these billboards. And both those parcels that are fairly large have vacant land and been vacant for a number of years, and we think that this is a good use of the two sites that's being recommended. You may say, well, is there precedent for this? Well, the city council in the past has made precedent by establishing this type of zoning on a billboard right behind the Elks Lodge facing ID 540. There is a prior precedent set at Highway 49. You may be familiar if you've come on to Interstate 8540. From Highway 49 to the entrance ramp, immediately to your right, there is a billboard that's been established, and of course, it's part of a church property, but the church is removed back and actually faces another road. That particular billboard is digital billboard. These two are not digital billboards. They're more traditional billboards. And then there's another billboard just farther down the road that's been passed recently that has the same precedent and the same type of zoning as this, and that's the one at the Brickyard, at Hanford Brickyard. So what we're requesting is that the council approve what's been done by the council in the past and other circumstances for the I-8540 corridor, that these two proposed billboards, we believe, are a good thing as a trade-off compared to the three non-conforming, that our client would rather have as a good citizen, two conforming billboards with proper spacing than having the right to go and replace three non-conforming billboards and investing money that may not be the best for, you know, the long run.
Questions for Mr. Longus. This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
I may make a motion. We approve the rezoning.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that this project does meet our statement of consistency, whereas the city council finds that the above amendments consistent with the city of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in the amendment is compatible with the existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you. Item number four, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from R9 Residential District and I-1, Planted Dust Run District, to CI Conditional Dust Run District for the continued use and expansion of the airport. The properties are located at 2209, 2258, and 2320 Rock Lane Drive, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 12-3, lots 9 and 9A, Alamance County Tax Map 12-5, lot 43. At this time, we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Nelson.
Mayor and council, this rezoning request for the airport has the recommendation of staff and the planning and zoning commission. They unanimously recommended it to the council for approval with the use and development conditions that were submitted. The commission also recommended that the official zoning map and comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning would not adversely affect the adjoining properties and that it is in keeping with the land uses already in the area and that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Daniel Lee is here, and staff is here as well to answer any questions I have.
Questions for Ms. Nelson, for Mr. Danley at this time? It's a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
No, exactly.
Ma'am, if you could, yeah, there you go. Thank you. Walk to the mic. State your name and address, please.
I'm Cheryl Triplet. I live at 3218 Overlook Court, which joins this particular property, and I'm very curious as to how the airport plans to use this property and how it will affect the property value of those of us who actually adjoin this area.
Mr. Danley, if you'd like to answer that question. Ms. Nelson, do you want to answer the question?
I'll let Mr. Daniel Lee answer. I'm gonna pull up some...
Okay. If you could just step over to the side, I'll let Mr. Danley come forward. Ma'am, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Triplet. The use, this is a conceptual drawing of a future terminal building facility and hangars adjoining on either side. The building in the center would be the main focus of the property, which would be really for mostly transient traffic, airplanes flying into and out of Burlington, and the passengers coming in and out, no airline service, of course, just coming into the private aircraft, business aircraft. This shows the air side where the airplanes come in and park, and to the rear of the building in the distance, you see automobile parking. To try to give you a physical idea of where this building might be located would be kind of down to the front and right of the Smith's home right now, the one that used to be Mr. Hut Ulysses home. As far as the housing development, I think where you live, we did some very, very unofficial measuring on a map, and this property would be slightly, or the buildings would be slightly further away than our current terminal building is now to that development, on the other side of that development, of course. Again, the use would be for terminal facility, automobile parking, people coming into the terminal, taking their flights away from the airport, with some hangar space on the other side as we grow and develop.
Let me interrupt a second, Mr. Danley. In reference to where Ms. Triplet, where she lives, can you point to that, Ms. Nelson, in general direction?
I'm not sure which house is hers.
Is that close?
Is this question? It's 3218 Overlook Court. Parcel number 112433 in the GIS.
She's in your development, state where you live. She sees you close to it, yeah. So right up in there, Andy.
Okay, so you switch back to the overview that you had that gives us... Okay, so you switch back to the overview that you had, that gives us... So, okay.
So you see now where this drawing shows the development, you can see the pond kind of to the left, which that pond separates what we're doing and that housing development. So that gives you an idea, if you could visualize that in your mind, what we're talking about.
Questions for Mr. Daniel, while he's up?
He's coming in off Alamance Road.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At the same point or in that Rock Lane, in that driver, is your entrance going to remain where it is, or were you planning to move that?
Well, we have kind of quite a plan. We're thinking that Grand Oaks Boulevard is to continue on through as the urban loop. If so, we would connect on to that urban loop at a portion of the place where it comes near this property. If for some reason, the Grand Oaks Boulevard just stops and doesn't go through, then an option would be, as we are negotiating with the family that owns the property there at the stoplight, that would be an entrance into this. If all else fails, then hopefully, Rock Lane Drive could be the entrance to this. But the long thought plans are that using the urban loop and connecting on to it where it comes through.
And most of this land that we're talking about is undeveloped?
Yes, ma'am, there, this land is undeveloped. There are houses, and kind of combination of housing and farmland. The three parcels that we're looking at tonight, one is a house with approximately an acre, kind of in the center, if you can see that rectangular house to the right, Amy. Okay? And then over to the left, there is a house with another acre or two, and then surrounding it is farmland, that with the lines going through it, Amy, to the left there, right there. So those are the three parcels we're talking about tonight. Now, if you go see, Amy, you see the number 12, I think, I'm looking from here?
Right here.
That, and the parcel right to its right, we're in negotiations right now with those landowners. We've made offers, and they're working on the counteroffers. And then to the top left, and there's where we connect up at Alamance Road, we're negotiating with those landowners as well right now.
Ms. Tripplett, did you get your question answered?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have one more?
Absolutely.
What timeline are we looking at?
The very earliest to break ground would be five years. We're looking at two to three years of environmental studies and permitting, working on the FAA funding to put this project together. We can't see breaking ground within five years. I'm hoping that soon.
Any other questions for Mr. Daniel? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Linda Bryant, and I own adjacent property also, not close to this other lady's, but I own property on Horner Court, which is adjacent to some of the proposed rezoned property. Actually, Rock Lane cuts in kind of behind my property, okay? And I'm concerned also, as she was, with the property values. What is this going to do to us? We've taken such a hit on property values with the downfall of the economy. Now, if we have to take another one, my mortgage is going to be upside down if we have to take another one. I'm concerned about noise from the planes on the ground, and I get a lot of noise from helicopters, not when you're in the air, but the revving up of engines, that kind of thing. So I'm concerned about that either during or after, or during the construction, deliveries, bringing in supplies, you know, that whole thing. I'm also concerned about traffic congestion. You know, what's that going to do to, I'm in a, sacked into a small subdivision with lots of restrictive covenants. And I wonder if there are any plans made for a buffer between those of us who join the property to what's to be rezoned, berm's, for instance, as they were used at Alamance Crossing, has been, I understand, very effective. And I know that the development conditions list landscaping. I'd like to know what's involved there, because you can stick two tulip bulbs in the ground and call it landscaping.
We do that at my home.
Every lady here knows what I'm talking about. Landscaping is relative to the project, you know? So those are my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Did you, I'm sorry. Mr. Daniel, do you want to address any of...
I can, of course. I certainly have no idea about property values and nothing that. I can say that in working with city planning and Joy Lee, one of his first questions was buffer. So we do have to come up with a buffer plan. We have some preliminary plans already. Basically, they are, as we take the top soil away from the construction site, we have to do something with it.
Sure.
Building a berm in the area where Amy has a hand now, down, right down the entire line, with vegetation atop that berm. The question arises right now as to working with Deener and what to do with the pond, whether it remains as a silt-type basin for the project, or if it goes away and becomes part of the berm. There is a question there. But yes, we are talking about hauling in top soil there to build a berm with vegetation.
Right. We never completed this side. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Okay, this side? Any other questions from council to Mr. Daniel or Ms. Nelson?
I do have one question, Mr. Daniel. The young lady was speaking about the helicopter noise and the plane noise, but just coming in on Alamance Road, I guess a lot of them land on Anthony Road where most of the hangars are right now. So will that shift any, or most of the thing that will land there at the terminal?
Well, of course, the runway is where the runway is for aircraft landing, so that doesn't change. Aircraft, the corporate aircraft will be coming into this new terminal facility. When it comes to helicopters, the majority of helicopters are the lifeflight guys who are based across the field in their own hangars, so that will not change. There are also military helicopters that fly in there in the middle of the night just shooting some approaches, and we're kind of unbeknownst about who they are, where they come from. Quite honestly, we don't know. They're just military helicopters coming in from wherever.
I could reach out and touch one from my deck there flying so low. Pull it down and ask him questions.
And I would love to invite any neighbor to come out and let me tour you around the airport and just see what goes on. I would love to do that to anyone.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, the question about the berm, is that part of the conditional use? Is that going to be incorporated in the approval?
According to speaking with Joy, we have to come up with a plan. We don't have an exact plan, so there's nothing to commit to as far as how many feet tall, how many feet wide, but there has to be some type of buffer worked into this project.
And that would be a condition, is that what your understanding is, Amy, it'd be a condition of the granting of this?
I didn't see it in here. You can certainly add it.
Okay.
But we do have landscaping requirements to buffer one type of land use from a totally different type of land use, such as in this case, and it would require substantial evergreen coverage to help...
Not tulips.
No, no tulips.
For, just for comparison's sake, would that type of buffer between two different land uses, would that be similar to what was described at Alamance Crossing?
I believe it would be more substantial.
More substantial?
Than that, yes.
Okay. And I think ultimately, with not having a final plan, it's a little bit of a quandary in as much as you've got to get your rezoning approved before you can start the permitting process to see what your final footprint's going to look like.
Not only that, but a contingency. We're using FAA money to purchase properties, and a contingency is having the property zoned for our use before we can actually close the land purchase deal.
Yeah, and that's a little bit different than most projects that come before us where there's a final architectural design and rendering already there. So with regards to the berming issue, I think that that's something that should be added to it regardless as we move forward in whatever capacity.
We have requirements in our ordinance that would take care of the landscaping, but if you would like to add it in addition, you can. But I think it's pretty well taken care of just by our ordinance as it stands today.
Got you.
Any other questions for Ms. Nelson or Mr. Daniel? Okay.
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
Mayor, based on the scope of the project and staff's recommendation and PSZ's approval, and certainly with the requirements that our current zoning restrictions are going to give to this project for the berming and changes of land uses, I would make a motion that we approve this rezoning as stated. I think that would sufficiently cover it, as Ms. Nelson's alluded to.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that this project does meet our statement of consistency, whereas the City Council finds the above amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Mayor, I would like to make one request to Mr. Daniel. As this project moves forward, I think it would be real important for the landowners and for this council as well, given the sensitivity of airport in general, is that maybe we get periodic updates, whereas we could invite the citizens to come and hear those updates.
Please, I do invite you all.
But if, Harold, if we could work out some schedule when they've got substantial information, and then we could get that on the agenda just to give everyone updates along the way, so we can hear any concerns that may be...
That brings us to public comment period, to which there was none. At this time, we have city council comments. Council comments. I will say this, this member's...
I'd just like to say thank you to the council for giving me this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with you and for the citizens of Burlington, and I've enjoyed it so far. I've ridden over some roads that I haven't been on in a long time, and that's been exciting and fun, and the staff as well. Looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Well, congratulations once again. We look forward to working with you, and I'm sure it'll be an unusual experience, I might say.
Mayor, I would like to ask or make a comment, I don't know if anyone else. We've got the Splash Park documentation that we asked from the work session last night to give us sort of updates on where our exact costs would be and that sort of thing. And I would certainly like to see us get this on the agenda for a vote in our next meeting.
20th.
20th.
20th. That's the next meeting, right? Okay, so we'll have that on the agenda for the 20th. And let me say to Ms. Grazer and Mr. Hornaday, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to be a part of this partnership, and it's one that we think will be a good situation for the citizens of Burlington, and we look forward to it. So the 20th, we will vote on it. You're welcome to come back at that point in time. Thank you so very much for giving us the opportunity. Any other questions or comments from council? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.